Welcome. Before we begin, back in 2005, I had the pleasure of serving with the late Nelson Deal as a town councilman. Nelson would always look out in the gallery and see a big crowd and he would go, "Time for a 50/50." And I say that for a little lighthearted humor, but my way of wishing and welcoming such a large turnout today because Nelson and I also enjoyed a large crowd at many of our county councils and spirited, well-rounded discussion. So with that being said, I'd like to welcome the mayor and council to come up front there and sit at the chairs, please.
I think, I think actually, I think if we ask them to sit back there until the presentation's made and then after that you can move on.
Okay, that's fine, I did not know that.
Sorry, we just don't have enough seats for everybody to sit there.
So when that's over, please, I'll welcome, I'm forward.
If that's okay with the, is that okay with mayor? I didn't.
All right. So we can begin the presentation?
I think, yeah. Good, I think Dave and his team, I don't know who's, I don't know who's coming with you, but maybe you're coming by yourself, I don't know.
Okay, remove the mask so my glasses don't see.
Your choice.
All right. So David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services, and we're here to provide a community, emergency communications overview for the Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor and Council as requested about 60 days ago.
Brian Albert, I'm the Assistant Director of the 911 Center.
Doug Molendor, Sheriff of Washington County.
Next slide. So the way we positioned this particular overview was really to start back in 2009 when the consolidation occurred and move that forward and really just work through the operational components of the center and then likewise work through the operating budgets and the CIP budgets for the 911 Center. As most remember, back in May and then I think subsequently later that year of 2009, a decision was made by both elected bodies, the Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor and Council, to explore and ultimately execute the consolidation of police dispatching services into the county 911 Center, Emergency Communications Center. Historically, the county has always provided 911 answering services for all public safety agencies, including Maryland State Police. Up until 2009, we had not provided city police dispatching services. We did provide fire and EMS dispatching services throughout the entire county to include the city, and we did provide dispatching services for the sheriff's office. To give you some historical perspective of the county's investment back prior to 2009 when they did the P-25 digital radio system upgrade, which moved us from a low-band system to, at that point, a state-of-the-art system that would provide adequate and acceptable in-building coverage for our first responder communities, the county had an investment of $27,843,292. And it's important to understand that the funding from that came from about five different, six different sources. We had about $3.1 million of federal funding, $1.7 million of state funding from the cities and towns, $576,000, and from the private, which was a local volunteer fire and EMS, and that came through a redirection of Senator Amos' funding to help fund this project of $464,000. And then ultimately, the county provided the remaining balance of $21.7 million towards that initial investment back in 2009. As we move forward, and if you see the slide that's before you at this point, as soon as I get myself reset, you'll see basically our approved positions in the FY-22 budget. And the total for FY-22 is 57 full-time positions are authorized for the 911 Center. We do have several other part-time call takers and dispatchers that do work for us, but ultimately, these are the full-time numbers. And if you look over a three-year period, that number went from 51 to 56 in 2021 to 57 in 2022. One of the biggest changes was in 2020, 21, when the commissioners approved four additional emergency communication specialists, which gave us enough staff that as we had to move through retention and recruitment issues and rehire, we would be able to keep minimum staffing levels without creating exorbitant amounts of overtime or, more importantly, mandatory holdovers. Next slide. The following slide shows the organizational structure of the division. Again, in 2020, 21, we did a reorganization that moved then Director of Training Quality Assurance Kevin Lewis to the position of Deputy Director of Administrative Services, and we basically split the division under me into two components. One is an operational section and then the other one's administrative services section. The administrative services section will be heavily involved in the oversight management of the new Public Safety Training Center. We also moved the 911 Center under Director Lewis. And then logistics, which is all of the supplies, the turnout, firefighter turnout gear and additional apparatus that we have fall underneath Director Lewis. And then you'll see under him, there's an Assistant Director of Communication, that's Director Albert sitting to my immediate left, and then his support staff, which include an operations manager, CAD IT administrator and a specialist, a quality assurance training officer, and then we have the floor staff, which consists of supervisors and emergency communications specialists. There are three different grades of emergency communication specialists. There's emergency, we call it ECS1, and ECS2, and ECS3. And simply stated, an ECS1 is trained in call-taking, and that's all they can do at that point. An ECS2 has at least one of the other disciplines available to them, and an ECS3 is a fully cross-trained person that can work any position, whether that would be a law enforcement, fire EMS, or a 911 call-taker. Next slide. This slide represents the division's annual operating budget relative to the Emergency Communications Center, and I won't go through each item here, but you can see that it breaks out into a myriad of different categories and things that it takes to keep the lights on. The two categories I'm going to cover, wages and benefits, and that's just over $5.5 million for FY-22, and you'll see in FY-20, it was $4.9 million. That alone represents a 13% increase over what is a three-budget cycle period. Next slide. This slide represents the material operating expenses for the center itself. That number is $669,220, $669,220. And again, if you look back in 2020, it was 578,170. And again, that represents that the building was built. Total operating budget for the center in whole is $6,276,090. And that's the wages, the operating expenses, and again, the building improvements. Next slide. This slide shows the Communication Center daily staffing levels and work assignments as programmed. And if you'll come down through the top part, you'll see we have call takers. There normally are four call takers assigned to that. There are times when the supervisor does fulfill one of those roles. The supervisors will also become surge capacity if the center becomes inundated with a bad thunderstorm, or a lot of times we'll get a wreck on the interstate and there will literally be 20 to 30 calls alone on just that one wreck. So those supervisors can and do step back and help fill those roles. We have two fire EMS dispatchers, we have two sheriff's office dispatchers, and we have two Hagerstown Police Department dispatchers. And then we spoke earlier about supervisors. We have two supervisors assigned to the center each day. One is administrative and one is operational, and that is in place 24 hours each day. One, with the operational supervisor, their goal and efforts are mostly concentrated on knowing what's going on on the floor at any given moment, whether a bad call has come in, dispatcher or call-taker may be in trouble, meaning they're stumbling through a call and can step in and help work that out, or in some points, just a reference point for the person that's involved with processing that emergency. The other one is administrative. There are a myriad of things that happen in the center in a day's pace that don't directly involve radios, personnel call-outs, staffing issues, quality assurance, all of those things are covered from that administrative person. And again, that's the first person to step back when the center experiences a surge in call volume. We also, at the bottom, you'll see our shifts, and I want to kind of give you an idea. The 0600 is 6:00 a.m., the 1800 is 6:00 p.m. And again, for those that don't know military time, it would be the same for the second one, it would be 6:00 p.m. to 0600. The normal assigned staffing for the day side, which is the 0600 to 1800 shift, is 12 with a minimum staffing, required staffing of 10. And then the evening or overnight shift is 11 with a minimum staffing of nine. That allows us to be down two people for sick call-outs, vacations, and those types of things without having to go to an overtime situation. We also have a power shift on each, each day, and that's from 12 noon till 2400, which is midnight. And that's really the bulk of the time where the real peak call volume exists. Now, it does exist a little bit before that, and it does at times exist a little bit after that, but that's a good snapshot of where the peak call volumes are. We know that every hour of every day doesn't generate the same call volume because people are sleeping, people are not working normally on the overnights in the normal population. So we have a power shift in place for each of those shifts. Next slide. This slide's a little tough to read, and I apologize for that. We didn't see it until really we got it in a format for here today. But this is just a general snapshot of the public safety budgets overall for the county, what they are, what they encompass, and where they apply. And in some cases, we'll circle around. If you look at the bottom left, or bottom right box, you'll see of those costs that are in our budgets, what of, which points of those costs go in kind either indirect or directly to help provide services to the city residents of Hagerstown, which are also county residents. So if you come down the budget totals, you'll see the division's budget is just short of $23 million. And then our 10-year CIP investment, that will include some of the yet-to-be-funded costs for the Public Safety Training Center on Sharpsburg Pike of $36 million. That will include that $36 million. About 15 to 16 million of that total is currently funded for the Public Safety Training Center. But that's $79.5 million worth of CIP projects in a 10-year cycle. When you look at the sheriff's office, and the sheriff may want to add in any conversation here, his budget is just short of $35 million and includes patrol, judicial, and I can't even read that one.
Process.
Process servers, detention center, the court book, central booking services, and Narcotics Task Force, and the day reporting system. And then the court system alone is also funded to some capacity through the county, and that represents just over $5 million. When you come across, speaking back to the division's budget direct, you'll see the top-right bullet references the volunteer fire and rescue services. There are 27 in total, and that contribution represents just short of $10.5 million. Some of that is direct cash, some of that is indirect services, whether that's through LoSAP, health insurance benefits for the EMS corporation employees, vehicle insurance, fuel and maintenance, utility reimbursements for the station. And then when you bring down, we tried to capture what portions of those, whether it's our direct budget or that budget directly above that, support services within the city of Hagerstown. And that number represents just over $5 million. And again, you'll see those items highlighted down through that bullet, which is the seven city departments, which does include Community Rescue Service, which is the largest call volume station in the county in whole, and they also are the largest employer of EMS workforce in the county. So when you come down to that, then the capital investments is about $10 million, I think is the number there.
$19.
$19 million. Can't even read moon stuff, but $19 million worth of those capital investments, again, will go to help service city residents as well. Doesn't mean they're exclusive to city residents, but they help service city residents. And then the last slide, and I'm going to let the sheriff speak to this to some level, but this represents a three-year history of call or incidents in the Emergency Communications Center. I want to emphasize that 2020's numbers are without question skewed because of the lockdowns and shutdowns of businesses where people were not out and about. We saw that even in the EMS call volume, and we certainly see it here. But I'm going to ask the sheriff to walk through this slide because he can likely speak more directly to the information.
So prior to the consolidation of the 911 Center, the sheriff's office did have a dispatch center at the sheriff's office. We had two dispatchers on at any given time, as well as a duty officer. At that time, we were also dispatching the three smaller municipalities, Boonesboro, Hancock, and Smithsburg as well, so nothing really changed with the consolidation in that respect. So what Dave has put together here is where it says HPD Dispatch, that's the volume of calls or events that Hagerstown Police Department generates on an annual basis. Where it says Other Municipal, that's actually the combination of Boonesboro, Smithsburg, and Hancock, the volume of calls on an annual basis. And then where it says WCSO, that's just the sheriff's office volume of calls on an annual basis. And then WCSO Dispatch is both the combined municipal, the three smaller municipalities, as well as the sheriff's office, calls for service. And as Dave said earlier, in 2020, we did have reduced calls because, quite honestly, we were taking a lot of telephone calls and things like that so that we didn't have direct contact in those minor cases and so forth. We only dispatched when it was necessary to have a deputy on scene. I will tell you also that from a radio volume, and I think Chief Kiefer will agree, that between the two agencies, the radio volume on the sheriff's office and the radio volume on HPD, there's no way that we could combine those services. There's just way too much radio volume there. Most of the time, we maybe hear about 20 to 25% of the calls that go out for Hagerstown Police Department. MSP is probably even less than that, which creates a problem. The good thing is we have the MDTs and the vehicles in both agencies or all agencies in the county except for the Maryland State Police, and we're able to see what calls each agency is operating on and so forth. So if somebody needs help or needs assistance, we have that ability. We do not have that ability with the Maryland State Police currently, but we are working on doing a CAD-to-CAD project with them that would allow that to occur.
So outside of that, I thought it probably would be prudent to give you an idea of, to the best that we can put something together, what it would cost or what it costs the county to provide the services to the city in today's dollars and cents. So to provide two dispatchers 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we would need approximately nine full-time staff to do that, using an ECC average salary of $46,569. And the FICA pension workers comp, health insurance, and taxes, that has an annual staff wage of approximately $81,633. And if you take that number and annualize that, that's $734,704.21, just in salaries and wages. If you take into consideration the other costs that have to be in place to actually affect police dispatching service, which is a radio system, CAD, and all those things, the county, and these are 2019 numbers, so I apologize, they're not the most recent, but they certainly, at the worst case, would be higher. So the annual CAD or Motorola maintenance that we pay is $746,462. If we took in a simple analogy that the part that we added to the system, which was police dispatching services, considering fire, EMS, sheriffs, and city police, using a 25% cost factor there and being, that's figuratively conservative, that would be a $186,615 a year cost to the city. And according to previous director, Wireless Director Maids, who has since passed, between HFD, HPD, and CRS, they would occupy, and do occupy currently, 70% of the radio traffic for the entire system in place today. So I don't think that 25% is, you know, outside of something that's very conservative. And then likewise, we have an annual CAD maintenance, which is the computer-aided dispatch side of things, which the city would need some form of that. We pay $266,146 a year as a maintenance fee. 25% of that fee is $66,536. For an annual savings or annual cost to the city, either way you want to look at it, of about $987,856 is probably about what it would cost the city or the county to have their services. So, and outside of that, I don't know if the sheriff or Director Albert have anything additional, but that's the outline we've got for you today.
The only other thing I would say is, you know, the sheriff's office has our judicial division that we also dispatch. The second dispatcher has the primary responsibility of monitoring them and being secondary to the initial, as well as the fact that we have the warrant task force, which is dispatched through the sheriff's office. And that's a combined Hagerstown City, Maryland State Police, and sheriff's office effort.
The only, the only thing I would add is, you know, two dispatchers for HPD and two for the sheriff's department is almost minimum right now. You know, we've discussed it of possibly adding a third to each side. It's just getting to where traffic's too much for two dispatchers to handle 20, especially during the busy time during, during the day, that 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, you know, two is a minimum at all costs right now. And that's going to get to the point that we, that we need three on each discipline, even fire and EMS, so.
And we are at the point where we're at max capacity in the current center. So when I told you 12 people are what we work, that's all the positions we have available to us. So with County Administrator and CFO Grease, we were discussing, you know, how to move forward and what the future of the 911 Center looks like, whether it stays at Elliott Parkway, whether it's a complete new standalone facility. But whatever, whatever we do, our goal is to make sure that it's positioned for the next 20 to 30 years and won't have to pick it up and move it again. If, if it gets moved, it may stay there and just exist there.
If we're at capacity, and Brian, you said you might have to add one each side, what happens then?
So, go ahead.
We'd probably have to remote that. We'd have, have to set maybe call takers up in a different area, which would, which we have that capability right now. Due to COVID, we had rooms set up to where we could isolate people from each other. Knock on wood, we've been very lucky with that. We've had minimal exposures. But we would have to move the call takers to those areas away from dispatch right now, and then we would have to use the consoles that are available, which is not ideal situation, but we could, we could operate like that.
And we do have the ability to have both, I didn't mention it, but we do have a backup center here at 100. And again, that was about a $3 million investment in 2015, I believe. But we do have the ability for both of those centers to operate at the same time. Again, not ideal because there's no voice and direct contact, but we could increase capacity with that. It's not something I would advocate that we do as a permanent solution, but if we absolutely had to live there for a small period of time. But one of the things that likely will happen at Elliott, at a minimum, is we will move the footprint of the building. There's a small space that's still available there to move the footprint of the building to make more spaces available, and we actually have programming and a budget to do that. It's about $1.7 million to do that at Elliott, so.
So, yeah, as Dave said and Brian said, we, we have been looking at that. So it's not a question of, of if, it's just going to be when. We are looking at short-term solutions, but we're looking at long-term solutions, as Dave said. You know, whether we can do something at Elliott Parkway, I mean, there are other county operations at that same location. So the space for them to expand in that location is very limited unless we would move other county operations to some other location, which would create another issue, or, like I said, a standalone 911 center at some place, whether it's down, you know, on Sharpsburg Pike or somewhere along those lines. So, so it's a, it's a big issue that we'll be discussing further with the commissioners, but it's, but it's, it's coming and it's going to, it's not, it's, it's not if, it's just when it's going to come.
And we did $8 million toward new communications, correct? And that's going to be adequate?
I, I don't know that. I just discussed that with Sarah before this meeting. I don't feel $8 million is going to cover it.
Yeah.
Because there are some infrastructure needs.
Right, we, right. Yeah, this board dedicated $8 million towards that, but yeah, we, we were just having, and I saw some emails about that, that we think that it's going to be, it's going to be more than that. I don't know what the, we don't know what the number is yet, but it's going to be more than that, and we'll, we'll be coming back and briefing the commissioners about that. But there will be, it will cost, it is based on operations and towers and all those kinds of things, so.
I do want to clarify, in that $8 million, that's for what we consider the backbone. That's the, that's what the radio system is. That's not portables, mobiles that are out and apparatus moving around and stuff like that. That's, that's $2.5 to $3 million alone, that cost.
Right, okay.
All right. Anything else you want to present?
I think we're good unless you have a question.
If not, we'll ask the mayor and council to come forward.
Can I ask Dave a question?
Sure. Or I'm going to have you come up front and you're going to ask?
Yeah.
Hopefully he has the information in front of him.
Okay.
All funding at 911 Center combined for your expenses, what portion of that funding and how much is general fund contribution?
$1.1 million comes from the number four.
Yeah, we're, we're 17% funded by the state, which is the 911 Board currently. So, you know, we'd be doing math, but you put me on the spot. The numbers, you know, so we're 17, so we're looking at 83% funded by general fund of the county budget right now.
Okay.
Uh, I can do the math for you when I jump off the table real quick.
83% of that because that's what city taxpayers pay.
Let's have the mayor and council come forward, and you can still ask those questions. We'll get you all at the microphones, and Dave and all them are still going to be here for any questions.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, obviously that was the plan, is to have the presentation and have the, the Board of County Commissioners and the mayor and council be able to ask any questions that they want.
Chris, anybody else? Mayor Keller and council and staff, welcome. Mayor, we'll open the floor up to you again.
Thank you, thank you for having us today. Shelley sends her regrets that she can't be here. Terry, it's very nice to see you in a meeting.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your text messages and emails.
So thank you for the presentation. I guess I just have a couple of questions or maybe more statements. Looking at the wages number that you gave us in here, which is $5,534,000, 23% of that would be coming from city taxes, which is $1,272,944. And the number was given that it would cost the city about $987,000 a year to run, to have the dispatch there. So it appears to me, if you're looking at numbers, that we're already covering it by our percentage of taxes that we're paying to the county. If you guys have anything to add?
I got, and that's, I guess that's my point in the question I gave to Director Hayes, is, you know, we currently fund at least 23% of the general fund that's collected in Washington County as a whole. So we're 23% of your budget configured. We're 23% of 911, we're 23% of Washington County Sheriff's Department, we're 23% of every county operation we fund. You know, and I don't know really if this conversation's about the 911 Center payment or not. I really don't know why we're having it if we're not discussing that portion of it. But, you know, again, I realize that back in 2009, it benefited both the city and the county to consolidate our dispatches. We brought people who were experienced, where you didn't have to hire additional people and train them. We also brought money for radio upgrades. If you go back in 2009, you'll see that. So we, you know, we added a benefit to the 911 Center. And I realize that, you know, over the years, we've had people who have transitioned out either through retirement or whatever. But, yeah, I keep going back to that, that same old thing that, you know... But, yeah, I keep going back to that same old thing that, you know, that everybody wants to talk about, but nobody wants to talk about, and that is that 911 is a county service. That's what it is. It's in law that way. It's written in law that way. It's county service. And it should be provided by the county. That's fine. I don't know, do you charge the eight other municipalities any additional funding? I saw there was a call log going there from dispatchers. That number. Yeah, 21,000 additional, yeah, 21,000 additional calls projected for 2021. Do you charge other municipalities anything to have 911 dispatch to them?
I guess I got a quick question, just for my clarification. In 2009, from minutes in the meetings, you all thought that was a good deal.
So did the county.
So how comes the city doesn't think it's a good deal now when nothing's changed from 2009 to 2021? That's just a simple question I want to clarify with some, unless I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
Randy, there is absolutely no question that in 2009, it was a good deal for both, for the county and the city. You know, the cost of upgrading our equipment, all that kind of stuff up at HPD, sure, it was good for both. It benefited the city, benefited the county. For me, it's, the bottom line is, is why are, why is the city of Hagerstown, who already pays 23% of the funding to 911, why are we being treated differently than the eight other municipalities in Washington County?
I'm not disagreeing or agreeing. I'm just saying if it was a good deal then, and it's cost us a ton more money.
It's not a good deal anymore.
How can it not be when it's all the money just heard we put in to keep it running? How can that not be a great deal?
Yes, well, that's why city residents pay county taxes.
Well, I think that fortunately, I have the benefit, being around at that time, I was a commissioner actually, I had the benefit of being a council member when that first started, so I get to see both sides of the table. I still remember coming into the burhands room with both sides and having that conversation. I still remember the impetus for it being that city employees who were going to lose city employment and move to county employment that did not share the same union-oriented long-term benefits, that the thought process was, well, if we can provide some funding as reassurance over time, as that would taper out to attrition, that that would wind down over a period of years. It didn't happen. You know, I left county government in, what, 2010 and came back to the city in 2013, and so I can't speak to, you know, to what occurred during that period afterward. And the unfortunate thing is, nobody put it in writing. There's no agreement anywhere that says, you know, here's what it's going to be in perpetuity. In fact, I thought that when we left a couple of months ago, we said we're going to figure this out and come up with some agreeable terminology and writing. I think for me, that didn't happen. We didn't put it in writing. It wasn't, you know, cemented in those words to occur like that over time, and.
Do you guys have a contract now with us? Did we send you a contract? Well, you don't have a contract, it would be, not signed obviously at this point, but don't you guys have one somewhere?
You send us a bill.
Is there a contract? Do we send them a contract, Kirk?
Yeah, there are two.
Then, to me, if it's a contract, I'm, just again, wouldn't you just try and negotiate that contract? I thought it was sort of in your ballpark at that point.
Well, I think it was important, and we've tried to have this meeting for the last six months, or last two months at least, was to understand from this council's perspective why this was to be paid in the first place. Because technically, there's going to be an argument that it should be zero.
I got you.
Which was not part of the agreement, either agreement. One was for 400 and whatever it is, 405 something, the other was for over $1 million. So why negotiate something that you're not even sure should be negotiated until you understand what the situation is at the 911 center from these folks that, except for Councilmember Bruchy and Alshar, weren't here at that time?
And I think we've said all along this leads to a bigger picture, that just being quite honest, we feel like the city of Hagerstown is treated different than every other municipality. This goes back to a tax differential. We're getting the same tax differential as the city of Keydiesville, and I think we can all sit here and agree that the city of Hagerstown provides a much greater level of service than Keydiesville, no offense to them, and any other municipality. And so we're paying our fair share of taxes. Our citizens are paying their fair share of taxes. There are inequalities all across the board, and I think the glaring one is our $12 million fire system that we get no credit for in the tax differential. And then here is just another additional payment that we're paying. But when you look at the percentage of our tax base, again, going toward wages and benefits on this subject, we're already paying $1.3 million toward it.
You also, though, use up a lot more of the services.
Right, we're a third of your population.
The one thing I asked you at one point is, if we were willing to give up on this 911 fee, would the city be willing to get off of the tax differential issue? To kind of balance those out? And I don't know if that's been a discussion with you all or not, but, you know, it's called negotiating and trying to figure out.
So I just want to understand, when you say we're using more of the services, if you could quantify that?
Well, I mean, if you look at the numbers.
I am.
And you all, they're dispatching so many more calls to the Hagerstown area.
56,000 for 40,000 people.
What's that?
Now, 56,000 for 40,000 people, I see that number. I also see 22,000, and I don't know whether this is all.
And all the other municipalities together.
Is this eight municipalities, is this the eight other municipalities or just the three that have police service?
Boonsburg, Smithsburg, and Hancock.
We're not counting, we're not counting in the 22,000, the other six municipalities, five municipalities that would also receive services. So Williamsport doesn't have a police department, right? But they definitely get calls for services. Somewhere in this 70,480 are the other five towns. And I guarantee you, if you took those numbers and add them up, you'd get close to about 50,000 calls for service, which would be.
Are they in the overall figure there under the county, the one that said WC? Is that where they're at?
So when you take those other towns that equal about, about 30% of the total city population, or about 15,000 of the 40,000 we have, and then you take their calls for service, they actually have more calls for service if you take just a population figure and apply it to the proportionate share of calls being answered.
Ultimately, though, I guess I'm just, you know, even in, I see two entities that are standing there like this.
I'm not.
And nobody wants to move. And so I'm sitting here saying, what if we do this, and everybody's still like this? And so nobody's moving.
What are you offering, Charlie?
I'm just saying, can we, you know, if we were to get up off of the 911 fee, would the city be willing to step back and get off of the tax differential? And it's my understanding that if you did that, you would make out better anyway. That's what I, that's.
I think.
The last time I asked that, based on the numbers I was given, that was, it would have benefited you all more.
Can you share those numbers with me and maybe?
It's been a long time. I had, Sarah.
I think the tax differentiation, I'm glad that you brought that up, and I put these numbers down today. The city collects $28 million in property tax. That's what we collect, $28 million, right? About $14 million of that goes to our city police department, and about $10 million goes to our city fire department. There's 24 out of 28 million dollars that we're spending right at this time that our citizens have said are your two most important services, number one, that we can't keep up with in terms of actually hiring personnel and bringing them in and competing with the increased wages from adjoining governmental entities, right? And I have said this as plain as I can say it for the last five years. Municipalities are not obligated by the state of Maryland to provide those public safety services. We do that voluntarily because we've done it historically, and we cannot keep up with doing so in perpetuity, seeing our numbers for the amount of property tax we collect and the cost for service it takes to provide it. At some point, at some point that is going to reach a breaking edge, it's simple mathematics, and we are not going to be able to keep up. We're going to municipalities have, and just about every other county in this state, and say, hey, this is not a municipal obligation. We do not have the financial capability to keep up with it. And especially when we're under the thumb of these other expenses that we're being asked, our citizens are being asked to incur over time, we're going to hand it off. It's just simple math.
Then maybe you all should lower your tax rate on your citizens and pass that on to us so that we can take care of it.
I mean, if you want to talk about consolidation of those types of services, I'm always sitting here.
There's not a chance that's going to happen.
See, and that's what I'm saying. Being new to government and just sitting and watching two entities draw lines in the sand doesn't help anything. It doesn't help the citizens, which should be all of our priorities. Instead, we have people governing that are just sitting there like this, drawing lines in the sand and saying, we're not doing this or that. And it just seems like, and that's how it's been since I've been in here, the talk behind the scenes is just negative anyway.
And with all due respect, we've been asking, since this administration started, to have conversations regarding all these to find resolution. I don't think we drew a line in the sand until last week regarding a completely different subject that we were once again expected to concede to. But we've been asking to have this conversation about the 911 center payment to find resolution. We've been asking about fair level funding for fire, which I don't think that conversation has happened. We've been asking for governance model for fire, I don't think that's happened. We've been asking for a tax differential conversation, I don't think that's happened. I mean, we're asking to have these conversations to find resolution, and it seems that you guys were the ones that drew the line in the sand with every other conversation until we figured 911 center payment.
You know, I'd have to dispute that. We don't hate the city by any means. And I don't think we've, at least I've been a commissioner, I don't think we've ever turned you guys down for a request for something to happen in the city. I mean, just look at the money, and that's our job. Look at the money, that we don't put a digger heels in the sand when there's something for the theater or the library or the transit center or just going, yeah, skate park, just, we've always been pretty obliging, I think, unless I miss something.
We are part of the county.
We are a part of the county.
Understand that, but you only got so much money to go around. We could fight, oh, I mean, we don't do it for all the other municipalities, and they ask, we try to oblige everybody. I mean, you're acting like that we don't really enjoy improving Nicole County.
All I'm saying is that we have made requests to say, can our staff sit down with your staff and come up with a plan for this? Can our staff sit down with your staff and come up with a plan for this? I can go over, you know, the last four meetings we've had, or three meetings we've had, when we've had the same conversation, but no work being done. So how do we get that done? I mean, I can sit up here and ask till I'm blue in the face, but until we all get together and start having these conversations, like this presentation that we asked for for six months, and we're appreciative of it, but all of the other topics seem to be on hold.
Well, I'll just say that this was a topic that the city asked to talk about. Scott and I talked about that, this is the thing. This thing about six months, there were a lot of different reasons why this meeting didn't happen, and it wasn't just the county's responsibility. The city had responsibilities too, so just to say that. But we can continue to talk about this. We can talk about the numbers, you know, but I think from the county's perspective, and I, you know, we go back and look at the minutes and see what they said. The intention was, and Councilperson, you were there at the time, the county's, I think the county and the city's intention that those costs were going to continue into the future. That's what your minutes indicate. Now, whether things have changed or whether we need to talk about that, maybe that's what you're talking about today. But the reason we're here today, and the reason we're talking about the 911 center, you would ask to have that discussion. And your minutes indicate, and I think everybody would agree, that that was the intent moving forward. If it changed, then I think we can talk about that. But, I mean, I think it was, right?
And we're here to talk about 911 and everything, and everything else just keeps getting thrown in to muck up the discussion on 911.
It's not to muck up the discussion, but it was agreed upon at the last two meetings that certain things were going to happen, and they haven't. That's all I'm pointing out.
What hasn't happened?
Well.
Because I remember the certain officials were supposed to get together, have a meeting, and I thought that today's was the outcome of that.
Yeah, there were a couple of different topics. The one was the 911 center, there's supposed to be an update on an agreement or a potential proposed agreement, and then a presentation with the ability for us to ask questions, which is happening. There was supposed to be a discussion about fair level funding for our fire service. I don't, to my knowledge, that has not happened. The chiefs and Director Hayes and Dale Fishak were supposed to get together to go over the governance model for fire, which I believe was put on hold. There's supposed to be a conversation about the tax differential, which, again, I think all of this goes back to the overarching, are the numbers fair? And from where I'm sitting, looking at the numbers, I don't believe they're fair. At the end of the day.
And so how do we get to a fair point? And I don't know that staff can work that out, and, or at least they haven't to this point. And so how do we get to a fair point? And people unfold their arms and start shaking hands and.
Could someone just explain the tax differential for Washington County? Is it may, is it shall? You said there were some reporting numbers, or we had to report yearly. You mentioned, Kirk, can you explain Washington County's tax differential? Are we a May county? Are we a shall county?
You are a May county, Jeff.
And what's the reporting? Because I think one of the things we were required in that legislation to report to you.
You're a May county.
So Kirk, can you add to that?
Yeah, I mean, the statutory provisions indicate that in Washington County and in certain other counties, the county commissioners can offer a tax differential to municipalities, taking into account certain things that are enumerated in the code, basically based on the services that are provided by the municipality. There's a statutory process for there to be a proposal to the municipalities, and the municipalities then have an opportunity to provide input to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners make a final decision as part of their budgetary process.
Well, I would like to add input then. Our fire system should count toward our tax differential.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is a pretty basic thing. I mean, that's a non-complicated thing to understand, is that the city of Hagerstown city residents pay $10 million a year for paid city fire service, and if it's not going to be accounted for in the differential, I will say it again, that paid city fire service should not leave the bounds of the city of Hagerstown. I mean, to me, it's that simple.
Pardon me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That tax differential is shared directly to the property owner, correct? The 12 and a half cents.
Yeah. I mean, that particular service, to me, is as simple as it gets for that particular item. Back to the 911, though, which I agree is the purpose we're here today, you know, it's difficult, we were given this today. In fact, the middle of the presentation, we were handling it. So it's hard to have a conversation with your other partners. If you're not given the information until halfway through the presentation on the conversation, you're supposed to be coming in to be prepared to have.
I agree with you. I just shared with the mayor that there's times that I'm handed something last minute, and you cannot make a good educated decision on information that you're handed right before a meeting. I apologize on our behalf that you all, that wasn't shared with you all sooner.
If I could just jump in and say a few things here. I would concede that, I think, at least on our end, I won't speak for the council and the mayor, but I think we've been poor negotiators in this. I remember the last time we met at your house, City Hall, I think what we agreed to, it was a meeting to agree to have a meeting, is basically what that amounted to. Our discussion really went nowhere, and I kind of see today's discussion going nowhere either, this issue not being resolved. Two points I would like to share. One, I think, is to the county's benefit, I think one, maybe to the city's benefit. When you look at the total number of police calls that went out, I see a total of about 148,000 police calls, dispatch calls, between the sheriff's department and the Hagerstown dispatch department, and to the municipality police forces as well. About 37% of those calls went into the Hagerstown Police Department dispatch, but the city of Hagerstown's population accounts for about a quarter of the county's population as a total. total. So I, I think you could also argue that there is a disproportionate amount of calls that go into the city versus the county overall as a whole. But it does feel like we are, both sides are putting our heels in the sand and not wanting to go any further. We were at $406,000. One of you, you know, said zero is what you think the 911 payment should be to the county. If our heels aren't in the sand, what is your number? What number do you think would be fair? I would be willing to come down.
I suggest 1.2 million. I think the city should pay 1.2 million for 911. I truly do, 100%.
That's what we're already paying.
I mean, we, we already do that.
I'm not there.
So the payment, I think, is what we're talking about. The agreement that was made in 2009, when you were mayor, that for some reason was not put, was not written down very good. I, I agree with your point that, you know what? Nowhere in there does it say in perpetuity, but in the same point, nowhere in there does it say there's an end date of it either. So you can argue both sides of that. But if we were to come up with an agreement, we were at $406,000, you're at zero. If your heels aren't in the sand, what is a dollar amount you would be looking for?
I'm at 213. Based on my last calculation, I'm at 213.
So we would redraft that, the contract that was presented to you about a year ago, where the dollar amount says 406,000, you would make it 213,000?
Based on my last calculation of my understanding of how it was supposed to be committed through attrition over time to benefit those employees that worked for the police department at the time, that were losing the benefit of the long-term, we'll call it protection of, you know, union negotiation for wages and benefits. That's how I understood it to be. If it didn't get written that way, at the end of the day, I can't speak to that, but that was my understanding. And so if you take those numbers, and I believe like, three years ago now, Mr. Hayes or somebody gave a report that said, hey, you know, here's where these employees are, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and here's where that's at over time, it came to about that figure. If you were to apply the logic from that timeframe to the current, as of that report, pay scale.
I appreciate you giving a number, because that's the first indication that I've seen that our heels aren't in the sand.
Very good.
So thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But today's figure's 900,000. You're basing that off 400,000. And if we would go to three, so change, but okay for the numbers. But one thing I gotta defend the commissioners on, and Mr. Burkett, when we walked into your meeting, no offense, no harm, no insult meant, I had a sheet on my, in front of me for a governance model. That wasn't on the agenda. I wasn't prepared for that. We may have not had this information in advance, but you did the same thing. So I don't want to get in that, bring insults out and apologizing. We all need to get to where and work together. $400,000 supposedly due again, but it's not on a contract. I think first, we need a good faith effort, having that paid, and all this other stuff can come into place.
We already did that, though.
And as regards to the tax differential, that money would go directly to the taxpayers, correct?
Yes.
And it's the property. When I was, that differential went into play, I think, 2010, is that correct? It was voted on 2009, went into effect 2010, because I wasn't a commissioner at the time. Williamsport, getting the differential to its taxpayers, raised, I think, their personal tax six cents to get the extra revenue, but the taxes stayed the same or less. Is that not correct? Is that something you all want to do so to have more revenue, so you could have more money to pay for your fire and police out of the differential? Because your citizens don't really lose. I'm not trying to say you're raising taxes, but you're finding a way to find more income to provide services. It could be highways, it could be everything else that you do. Would that be accurate?
We want our citizens to have a fair calculation for what they are already paying to the city.
And I think inside that legislation, there is, I'd reach for a formula for that. Is that not correct, Mr. Downey?
It's not a formula.
But a process, or a...
It's a process.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking you for clarification on that, on using the right words.
So at that time, the city of Hagerstown was the only municipality of the nine not to take the step to make that adjustment. That is correct.
Yeah.
However, over the, what, 12 years since, in which it has seen significant decline in its accessible base, in order to keep pace, the city of Hagerstown has made up all but about five cents of that, or about $60 to the average taxpayer. So it's about five cents, or about $12 a penny, that the city would have to look at to make that adjustment if that was included in the differential.
All right, well, I don't see a solution today, but I see the beginning of some numbers. So is this something that we both can come back with, with staff with numbers, that you make a presentation, if it's zero or 200,000 for the 911 dispatch?
Are we talking about 911 center payment? I mean, we can come up with some calculations, but I think it's very clear that we're already paying the amount to cover our services through our county tax bill.
Is there willingness to pay the 400,000 that was due July 1st? I guess that was the due date? And then we can start a new contract, or zero, or 200,000?
That's what we did the last time.
Feels like roundhouse day.
With the understanding that we were going to...
Yeah, but you did that last time, you knew this other payment was gonna be pending too, so.
Right. But you can go back and watch the meeting, and it was very clear that we agreed to make that payment, because we met and we're gonna come up with a resolution, and we still don't have a resolution. So again, why is it always us? It's always us, it's always our taxpayers, it's always us that have to say...
I don't agree with that. It's just, why is it always us? Why is it always us? We've already demonstrated, we've been very collaborative partners, the Maryland Theater, the library, the list goes on of all the things that we help. You're trying to paint us as if we don't ever want to help you.
That's not the case.
That's what the impression that I'm getting.
That's not the case.
That's what we're getting. We've, we help you all the time.
That's, I hear...
Because we're disagreeing, you're trying to say we're not fair. We just got a disagreement that we don't need to paint it as fair or not fair. We're always helping.
We've been doing the same thing over and over and over. That's what we're stating.
But we do need to come to terms and work it out, like Mr. Burkett was saying.
You, but you just did exactly what I was talking about. You said, why is it always us? And then the county says, why is it always us? And, and at least Christian took the step of saying, and that's what I was trying, Bob said, you know, what are you offering? So I expressed an offer, and then we get nothing until Christian spoke up.
That's the same. We got nothing either until you spoke up. But, but hold on a second, Commissioner, because this has been, Tiara and I, we are new. We are new. And to say that you guys have been very collaborative is not true. It's not true. There's, there's, these conversations could have happened. Why are you cutting me off?
I apologize.
Thank you. These conversations could have happened behind closed doors. They could have happened two by twos. We could have had these negotiations very early on. It didn't, it got to this point when people weren't answering emails.
I don't want to cut you off, I'm sorry. I don't agree with the premise that we're not collaborative. We showed lots of millions of dollars of examples. We're just at a disagreement here. So let's come up with a figure, like Mr. Burkett's saying and presenting.
I, I agree with you. Oh, I forgot her name. I, I agree with you.
Tekeisha.
Tekeisha, thank you. As, as somebody new as well, I agree with you. I think, you know, we keep talking about staff discussing it. Since we are the governing body, there should be two-on-two, or whatever it takes, to get people together to, to work it out. Then we can go back to, you know, our bodies and say, you know, this is what we discussed. It opens up dialogue. When you keep, especially if you're not being informed of what's being discussed with, between staff. Matter of fact, I recently asked our administrator for a weekly briefing. I think that, that as the governing body, we should be briefed. I hope you are briefed, but I don't know if...
We are.
Do you give them a weekly briefing of your activities for the week?
I speak to them every week, yes.
And, and so...
Commissioner, with all due respect, I do the same thing. I talk to the commissioners on a daily basis. So I, we brief them.
You didn't say you did that.
But I will tell you that from a, from a staff perspective, I mean, Scott and I, we, I think we have a good relationship. We can talk all we want, but staff can only go so far, right?
And I understand that.
I think the elected bodies are gonna have to make some decisions here. Scott can knock him up with the, with the, with the solution. But, you know, I talk to the commissioners on a daily basis, so I, with all due respect, I just...
John, I wasn't saying that to tear you down. I'm saying that when, I feel like sometimes I'm in the dark on stuff, because it only happens between a couple people.
Let's, let's... I don't want to be smart, but we've got some good dialogue going on here with the 911 center. Right now, we probably should just stay focused on that.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you, Kristen, for coming up with a number there. That helps me. I think it's gonna help everybody, at least, I think, I think it's gonna be beneficial to know that there's some numbers being thrown around for the 911 center. So that gives me something to go back to staff with and ask them some questions, and then we can go from there.
So what, what would you like from us? Would you like a proposal? Would you like Kristen to quantify that number that he just threw out there?
You could make a proposal, or we can make a proposal. It's almost like a real estate transaction, so to speak, a contract.
But you said there's already some discussion. You might have presented a contract, or...
I mean, I think, yeah, I think there are some. I think that's what Scott said.
So again, we're one of the contracts with your staff, and then they can negotiate and make a...
If I could say, with all due respect, I would really like to see a two plus two with this issue. We've sent it to, at the staff level before, and it sat there for a while. I would like it to be at the commissioner, council level.
And to give respect where respect is due, you did ask for that last week, and I appreciate that. We just weren't able to collaborate in that short amount of time, but I appreciate you reaching out and asking to...
If you can find a way to cut a ribbon at the end of this, you'll get a deal accomplished.
There was, there was a, a joint meeting between the chiefs, HPD, fire, Dave Hayes, sheriff, two years ago now, that looked at everything that we collaborated on together.
That you should have copies of.
Right. NTF, all that stuff, going down the line, all right? And they, they were trying to figure out where any shortfalls were, that either the city or their county were putting in more for these services, okay? I went through, one thing that was never, ever thought about during that process, because I asked our chief, is, okay, did we, when we talk about general fund funding from the county, did we take these issues and, you know, figure out what the city's contribution to them were, above and beyond what we're already paying for in these other areas? No, it wasn't. So I went through each one. Took me all day. I went to your budget, I went to our budget, I went through this whole list, and work it down to who was paying what, and what the city taxpayer was actually paying for. And I, I have, I wish I would have brought that, because I didn't know where this discussion was gonna go today. But I don't like the number of 214, I don't like Kristen's number, because I think that's way high. But, you know, I will supply you with those. I, I will send that to each of you, so you can peruse it and see if I made a mistake someplace, just so you know, I know I didn't. But, anyway, anyway, because it's math. But, so, you know, I want to provide that as, as part of this 911 discussion, because I believe it's relevant, when our director of emergency services and our chiefs and all get together and talk about these issues. And, and they're the ones who put this on paper. It wasn't the city, and it wasn't the county, it was that joint effort. So I'll supply that for you guys, and I'll make sure you guys get it too. I know I sent it to Scott. I don't think it went any further. We sent it to Michelle.
There already is a letter that they all signed, correct? And, and wasn't the discrepancy...
It was. Yes, yes, that's the one I'm talking about. I went over, right. Right. So anyway, so I'll supply that, and then we can have a two-by-two, and we can discuss those issues and see where we can find some middle ground. Listen, I believe that, you know, one of two things have to happen, as Kristen has rightly stated, in the next 20 years. Either we have to focus on a fair tax differential that covers all aspects, which means permitting, inspections, all those things that, that we do, that you guys do, that my citizens pay you guys to do, but you don't do in the city of Hagerstown. So we, we have to look at all those issues and come up with a fair number. Now, there may be a time in the next 20 years where the city of Hagerstown says, okay, we're done with fire services. You guys can take it over. We just can't afford it anymore. Because we're headed in that direction right now. We just can't afford it. So I'll supply that information to each one of you, and hopefully we can have a, a conversation, educated conversation on room.
All right, Mayor, we have a event. Is there anything that you all want to summarize or commissioners?
And this is just me. I don't know if the other commissioners agree to this or not. It looks like we're making some headway on this 911 center. So personally, I think the two administrators could get together. I think the commissioners have time to talk. We need to, Kristen's kind of throwing a number out there. If we can get that resolved and not have to take it to two plus two, that's one thing off of our plate. I don't know if you all are interested in that or not. I am.
At the council's request, I'm willing to do a two plus two. With all due respect, under the last, under the current administrator and the most recent interim county administrator, we haven't gone as far as we have, as we have with this meeting, just discussing it between council and commissioner. I would like to see a two plus two, if you're willing to. And if it has to be a two plus one, it could be a two plus one.
Well, I'm, I'm for the two plus two. I would just like to get this 911 issue resolved.
Yeah, because there's, there's another one issue that we need to do.
And I think that's what, one of the topics of the two plus two would be about, to help settle on what that number might be. Again, we made tremendous headway when I asked a question about what your number might be. As it stands right now, the ball's in our court now. They gave us a number, now we need to come up with a number, and I'd like our commission to meet with their council.
And I'd be willing to be a part of that. Is, is there anything wrong with if we were to attend the meeting between the two administrators? Or is that a threesome that can't happen? Just a quorum among those who vote can't assemble?
It doesn't have to be two. It could be two, 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 two. It could be several groups of two talking, okay?
Yeah, and I don't count.
All right, Mayor, is there anything you want to summarize or counsel, not to cut you off for short in the conversation, but is there anything you want to add? Scott, anybody?
I do have, I have two quick issues. One, I just want to talk about the ARPA stipend that is going to your employees. We have HFD members who work for DES who are not receiving a stipend because the city paid them, and I just think that is unfair. Yes, we did pay them a stipend because they worked for the city of Hagerstown, but they also worked for the county. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's very unfair to not pay an employee a stipend when they did work for you. And I hope that you'll reconsider.
Again, that's ahead of the game. We are working on that, and there's, it's involved more, it's like...
Well, if I could jump in on that with the mayor, I had that on my note here. Since we did have a joint meeting today, I wanted to bring it up. My understanding, and I'm hearing from a few, just a few folks that this impacts, if you received a stipend from the city of Hagerstown for your work for the city, and you volunteered or worked for a county department, you wouldn't receive that stipend.
Yes, I read that.
And now, on the surface, that may sound, okay, I get it, maybe it is double dipping. However, those firefighters who might work and receive a paycheck in Howard County, or EMS workers in Howard County, or Montgomery County, or they received extra pay, they were allowed to collect both stipends. So that's not fair. And by us doing that, it only further divides the wedge between the county and the city.
I agree. I agree. We have a firefighter who works for the airport that was also paid the stipend.
Scott, do you want to add to that?
I, I'll just say, I mean, there's a lot more to that discussion, and staff has been meeting on that, and the plan is to bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion.
Thank you.
But the, the ones in Montgomery County, to my understanding, they were paid, they got, they received more in an hourly wage along the way, so they didn't receive...
But it was still this ARPA funding, money that went to it, and they received additional funding.
Wanted the airport, which still looking at that. They may have just been an oversight on our part, so I think that using that as an example may be an issue as well. But the plan is, in the next week or two, I think, I think we were looking at November 2nd to come in. Staff's going to brief you on how we got to there, and the commissioners can have a further discussion about that.
Thank you. I hope, I hope that you will reconsider that. And the last thing, I watched your meeting last week, and Senator Cordman had asked for a letter of support for $500,000 to go toward our burn facility. His request was not for money. It was just for a request for a letter of support, and I was pretty shocked to see that you denied it. He was under the impression that there was going to be support for it, and, you know, the burn facility that you guys are building is separate than ours. Our still trains county employees, it's still trained city employees. That affects their livelihood and their ability to train safely. We do need to upgrade our Washington County cadets train there, so I respectfully ask that you reconsider.
We are going to reconsider that. I've submitted a legislative request to Kirk Downey to include your request along with our request to be con, be combined in a county delegation bill submit for request for funding for both burn buildings, as showing collaborative partnership of working together. So I haven't had a chance to talk to Senator Cordman, but I've already made that request for one of our legislative requests for our November 9th meeting, to combine our requests with Senator Cordman's request for funding for both facilities.
But, and that, that's great, but even just a letter of support would still be appreciated toward our project.
I think what it was, we were given a deadline, and some of this stuff was being talked about. So there you go. That's the answer for that. Is there anyone else? Wayne?
I have one more, and I know we're running over time, but these meetings rarely happen. The other week, the community lobbying coalition representatives were in here to ask about our list of our priorities or action items we would like to see, and I had brought up the Dolman Valley Heritage Museum and possibly receiving some type of funding. We got them added onto our package maybe two years ago, just as a discussion item, but not actually a request of any kind. I think we're ready to move forward in that direction. The, the concern was that maybe we didn't have the support of the city and the commissioner, so I, I think the city has been very supportive of their efforts. I know we are providing museum space for free, so they can have a physical location in the interim. Is there support among the city council to have them include it as a request? And maybe the request is still to be determined. I hope it's not premature, but we need to start thinking about that for when the General Assembly reconvenes in January.
That, that has already gone out as a request.